Good evening everyone, this is City Council. Roger, if you could go ahead please.
Thank you Lord Prowest. Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council which is being held remotely in terms of Section 43 of the Local Governance in Scotland Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting which is being livestreamed. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting but if this is not possible, the committee services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on, your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if the screen is still on. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat, otherwise the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the council and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct will also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries Lord Provost, so I will now ask the committee services officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thank you. As indicated, I will now take a roll call for the minute. I would ask that members confirm their presence when I call their name. Lord Provost.
Present.
Councillor Alexander.
I'm here.
Councillor Anderson.
Present.
Deputy Lord Provost Cordell.
He gives his apologies.
Thank you. Bailey Dawson.
I'm here.
Councillor El Nakla.
Hi, I'm here.
Councillor Flynn.
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Hunter.
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Lynn.
Present.
Bailey Roberts.
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Rome.
Good evening, present.
Bailey Storrs.
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor Short.
Here.
Councillor Smith.
I'm here.
Councillor Tolland.
Aye, aye, I'm here.
Bailey Keenan.
Present.
Councillor Crookshank.
Present.
Councillor Finnegan.
Evening, I'm here.
Councillor McHugh.
Present.
Councillor McCarvin.
Present.
Councillor Malone.
Hi, I'm here.
Councillor Scullen.
Evening, present.
Councillor Shears.
Present.
Bailey Wright.
Present.
Bailey McPherson.
Good evening, present.
Councillor Coleman.
Good evening.
Councillor Crichton.
Present.
Councillor Duncan.
Here.
And Bailey Scott.
Here.
Thank you, that concludes the roll call.
Thank you Veronica, Roger.
Thank you Lord Provost. Lord Provost, members of the council, there are three items of business this evening. Item two, the minutes for information and record purposes.
Thank you Roger. Any questions on the minutes? See nothing in the chat or on the screen. I'll take that as the minutes being agreed. Roger?
Thank you Lord Provost. Item three A, appointment to membership of standing committees and outside bodies, licensing committee. It is reported that councillor Finnegan has submitted her resignation as a member of the above committee. The council's instructions are requested with regard to the filling of this position.
Thank you Roger. Any nominations please?
Chair, could I nominate on behalf of the Labour group councillor Scullen?
Acknowledge that. Are there any other nominations? Congratulations councillor Scullen, thank you. Roger?
Item three B, Dundee Repertory and Scottish Dance Theatre. It is reported that councillor Scullen has submitted her resignation as a member of the above outside body. The council's instructions are requested with regard to the filling of this position.
Thank you Roger. Again, any nominations please?
Lord Provost, could I nominate on behalf of the Labour group Bailey Wright?
Thank you very much. Any other nominations? I see none. Congratulations Bailey Wright. There'll be no other business? That's City Council, thank you very much.
Thank you Lord Provost. The next committee is the Climate, Environment and Biodiversity Committee.
Good evening everyone, welcome to this committee meeting. We have got six items on the agenda, three pretty packed reports with a lot of data, you can't see we're going to give you data on this committee. But if we'll get started, if we hand over to, is it Veronica?
It is Veronica, thank you. Item one, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations?
I can see none being intimated. Thank you Veronica, next item.
Item two, budget investment, environmental actions activities.
So this is simply an agenda note, you will remember that we agreed to spend two hundred thousand pounds when we agreed the budget and this budget note details how that money is to be spent. This list has been agreed with officers with the recommendations for the expenditure, so it's basically sixty-five thousand to recruit four temporary street cleaning staff for six months as we did last year, that proved to be very successful. Hiring thirty thousand to hire the sweeping contractor to do additional work. Thirty thousand on the external hire of a deck scrubber, I'm sure Mr Boyle can explain what all these different bits of equipment can do. Thirty thousand to support for community cleanups, they went extremely well last year as well. And forty-five thousand on the purchase of litter bins. This is simply for noting, our committee happy to note these expenditure items. Can see no one raising a hand, so Veronica?
Convener, I have actually already typed in the text questions.
Oh sorry. Sorry, I'm looking at hands phrase, Bailey, right, sorry. Bailey McPherson.
I thought it was a longstanding convention that we wrote in the chat and we didn't use hands, we've had conveners ask us not to use hands. So I think a consistency would be helpful here, convener. So using the agreed format, I have typed questions and amendments, actually a motion because obviously there isn't actually a this is purely an agenda note. My questions are as follows, the recruitment of four temporary cleaning staff for six months, could officers indicate the start and end date of these contracts? Could they also indicate in terms of the external hire of sweeping contractor, external hire of deck scrubber and external hire of sorry, and the purchase of litter bins, how long and how many of each? And could we also have some information from officers how much the thirty thousand of support for community cleanups will actually result in, how many community cleanups will that actually support?
Thank you Bailey McPherson, I'm just checking, I can't see those questions anywhere, but I assume that Mr Boyle is happy to respond to them.
Thanks convener, thanks Bailey McPherson. The note indicates and confirms that the four temporary cleaning staff is for six months, the recruitment is ongoing just now, so it will simply be from when we can appoint those staff to, they'll have a six month contract from that date, whenever that is, which will be imminent. In terms of the external contractor, we usually, we aim to bring them in at the height of the season for leaf collection which is generally in autumn and we'll have them in for as long as the thirty thousand pounds would pay for that. In terms of the cleanups, I can confirm that we will be scheduling four community cleanups this year. I think that's hopefully answers to all the questions, convener.
Not quite, Mr Boyle. I did ask about how many litter bins did we get for forty-five thousand pounds? And you did indicate that the sweeping contractor will be for however long we can get for, no we know the amount which is thirty thousand, so roughly, and I appreciate give or take, Mr Boyle, but roughly how long are we actually talking about we will have this deck scrubber actually in the council's possession?
Okay, and forgive me Bailey McPherson, we'll have the deck scrubber in possession for approximately three months. The external hire of the sweeping contractor, that's the larger machines, will depend on how many machines we bring in at the one time. So that's why I was, sorry, I was trying to explain that it will depend on if we're bringing four in at the one time, it would obviously burn up the thirty thousand pound sooner. But generally we'll have them in for two to three months from October.
Okay, thanks for that.
Sorry, sorry Bailey McPherson, I think the final question was about the number of litter bins, I don't know if Mr Boyle's able to answer.
Yeah, sorry convener, Bailey McPherson, you're correct, you did ask that question, I don't have the specific number, but I'll get that detail to members after the committee if that's acceptable.
Bailey McPherson, would you be happy for Mr Boyle to send you a written note of those responses?
Yeah, I think that would be helpful, I think it would also be helpful to circulate it to all members of the committee, convener. I do, as I say, have a motion.
I can see you have an amendment.
Yeah, well it's not an amendment, it's more of a, yeah that was a mistype on my part, it's more of a motion because there's not actually anything to amend as such, this is just obviously an agenda note, so it's more of a motion than an amendment.
So presumably, I'm just going to check if anyone has any more questions, I can't see any notification in the chat. So are you going to circulate your motion Bailey McPherson, and I could see that councillor Duncan is seconding it.
Well I'm not going to circulate it, but committee services presumably will do so, thank you.
I'm just wondering if it is a, ah here it is.
Okay, rather than detain the committee unnecessarily, I'll just, I'll just speak to it because it is pretty self-explanatory. The Liberal Democrat group is of the view that whilst any expenditure to improve the environment is to be welcome, we note that yet again this consists of temporary jobs, short term hire of equipment and one-off community cleanups. And we are of the view, and we've had a very consistent approach in relation to that, that we feel a longer term strategy is required, looking at the viability of additional permanent jobs, which we have included in our budget amendment each and every year for probably about the past four years. And we feel that to this end and to engage in a meaningful and detailed discussion on options for a more permanent way of dealing with this, there should be a short term officer member working group chaired by Mr Boyle as executive director of neighbourhood services, with elected member representation from all council groups plus the conservative member. And it should undertake its deliberations over the next six months and thereafter the outcomes and any recommendations should be reported back to the relevant committees. I think our fundamental point here is this, that in a way you can't keep doing the same thing and expecting a different result. We've had the same things from the administration group last year and the year before, slightly differently presented, but essentially the same sort of one-off things. And the reality is that whilst it may be an opportunity for a convener to turn up in a fluorescent jacket at community clean-up, come back six months later, as we can see in Pentland where there has been one, and in Perry Street where there has been one. And unless there is sustained action over the long term, and this will go for other ones out with my own ward area, it is short-termism. And we've made the point repeatedly that when you've got thirty-nine less street cleaners than you had in twenty fifteen, there is bound to be a real impact on the quality of the environment job. Not that the staff are any less dedicated, they most certainly are. I think we would all speak very highly of the staff in neighbourhood services and in this particular case we're talking about staff working in environment management. We think they do an excellent job, bottom line is there isn't enough of them. But we take the view that no one group on the council has all the answers, so all we're seeking tonight is that a working group is established with all party, cross-party representation chaired by the executive director, including any of his team that he considers to be appropriate to take part in that. And well let's see if we can reach some sort of consensus. We're all very well aware of the financial challenges facing the council. But as I say, we make the point, and we've made it repeatedly, that short term one-offs, whether that's short term hire of equipment and temporary jobs, these people will get six months work and then that will be them. And one-off community cleanups really isn't the long term solution here. And that we really should get our heads together in a collaborative way cross-party involving officers as well to look at all the options and come back with recommendations that can be reported to committee. Committee thereafter can reach whichever conclusion it wishes. But we think this is a positive way of trying to tackle the short term nature of this and look for a longer term strategy. Thank you, convener.
Thank you Bailey McPherson, I could see that you have a seconder councillor Duncan, I'm wondering if councillor Duncan would like to formally second or wishes to speak?
Convener, yeah, I'll certainly formally second and I'll just speak briefly if I may. Really just why can't reiterate some of what Bailey McPherson has said before. We're not claiming to have all of the answers to everything, but what I'd like to see is to increase the depth and breadth of the council's capability to keep on top of things. I'm very aware, not just in my, obviously you know quite to this day much visited ward, but elsewhere in Dundee, Dundee as a whole has really high aspirations to attract tourism and really this goes to more power to the elbow of officers to enable us to showcase Dundee, I think everyone would agree with that. And so therefore I think the idea of a working group which can report back in due course would be a very good one. And I know that you know every year set within my ward, you know the principal streets I always ask to be jet washed and officers obligingly do do that, around about Gala Week and also the Christmas white switch on. But I do know from previous years that sometimes the available resources being that they do struggle to actually come out and do it as quickly as they would like or indeed as often as they would probably like. So in conclusion, you know, I think it's a topic worthy of further consideration.
Thank you very much. Councillor Duncan, I'll bring in councillor Alexander then I will respond to the suggestion for the motion. Councillor Alexander?
Thanks very much convener. As you and colleagues know, issue of litter on our streets and the condition of our streets is one that gets me very animated indeed. I spent the first fifteen minutes this morning picking up litter before I volunteered at one of our local community food larders. But I think there is a couple of points that it's important to focus on here when we talk about the context now. Bailey McPherson, and I'll give him full credit in this, but he says we're very well aware of the financial position. Now, I'm not entirely sure if that always manifests itself in the conversations and suggestions that come forward. Because I think the reality is and what the context in which we've been operating, and let's remind ourselves of the quantum of resource that we've been challenging ourselves to fill the gap of is a hundred and sixty million pounds since the austerity agenda was brought in in two thousand and ten by the then Lib Dem Conservative Coalition government. This is not choices the Dundee City Council ever wanted to make, but the realities of the financial position that we find ourselves in. The second part is that the administration has consistently tried to find ways, looking on the year-by-year budgets that are set, to add in additional revenue to support these types of activities and they have had impact and they have been well received for the most part. I would like nothing more, of course, as every member of this committee would, than to put long-term funding into every aspect of the council. Whether that be environment, ASN, whether that be about employability. That's not currently where we are, very sadly, and I hope that does change. I don't think that setting up an officer elected member working group is actually the way in which we generate any further traction on this, if anything, I actually think it takes officers away from getting on with the job that we've tasked them to do and it's potentially another form of micromanagement. Now, I think the other point I would make as well is I would see no difference I suppose in terms of the other issues that were contended within the city at this point in time. And I think it could become a nonsensical venture if we start creating these working groups on every particular topic, as I've said, you know, there are a whole host of others from attainment to employability and everything else in between. You know, there are a whole host of others from attainment to employability and everything else in between. So let's empower our officers to get on with the job. We have ample opportunities through our committee structures, through our strategic documents and the policy reports that come through committee. If there are other areas in which we want to focus, then let's have that conversation. But I don't feel that creating another mechanism, another forum, another opportunity for merely talking is actually the right vein through which we should be kind of pushing at this point in time. Let's empower our officers to get on with the job, let's give them as much resources as we can find within the budget, as we've been trying to do. And let's hope that that, again, continues to make an impact in our local communities. Thanks.
Thank you. And councillor Alexander, well, I am going to be moving that we accept the agenda note as is and not accept this motion. I am very, very conscious of how busy the officers are and that every, you know, the idea that they're not thinking of long-term solutions is frankly a bit insulting. We're always trying to think of long-term solutions within the resources that we have. So I think it's about noting what we've done. If there are suggestions about how best we spend our budget, that's actually for consideration when we're discussing our budgets. And it's for each of the groups here to come up with their proposals about how we spend the budgets differently. So I'm going to propose that we move, we note the budget position as it is and support the note.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, councillor.
I did put an item in the chat, but it appears that it wants to send tomorrow. However, you've let me in and said, I'm prepared to go along with Billy McPherson and suggest that, you know, I'm prepared to support a working group. You know, I'm hoping that it wouldn't be a talking shop. And the reason that perhaps wouldn't be the talking shop is, you know, opposition groups have put forward different budget proposals over the year. And if it means that we get together at some time and decide that there is something perhaps differently could happen next year, and we can make a real difference, you know, one of my gripes is about the level of cleanliness of the bus shelters that we've got in the town. I mean, some of them are absolutely shocking. So I think there is potential cleanups in the area, in the town, that we could make a difference to. So I'm prepared to go along with the conversation that Billy McPherson is looking to have in the hope that we can reach something different than we've done in the past.
Thank you, Bailey Keenan. I'm going to bring in Bailey McPherson to sum up.
Thank you. I think you need your seconder to your no-action.
I can see that Bailey Dawson has seconded me.
Yes, formally second, convener.
Okay, in which case I'll sum up. Can I just about say how insulted I am, convener, that you should say that we are insulting officers and suggesting that they have no long-term solutions. I, the point I make is in relation to this agenda note, we have excellent officers. I never insult officers. I'm always courteous at all times to officers. And you should withdraw that, convener. It was quite uncalled for. And I will make the point that the short-term nature that I was talking about was not about the actions of officers. It was about what's in this agenda note, because everything that is in it that has been brought before committee tonight is short-term, six months, short-term hire, one-off community cleanups, purchase of litter bins, I fully accept, will have a shelf life, I fully accept, but the rest is short-termism. And I speak only in relation to the agenda note before us. And I would never insult officers, and I take great exception to the manner in which you responded. We're all aware, councillor Alexander, of the financial position. And it's always quite pathetic that you go back to twenty ten. I mean, for goodness sake, we're in twenty twenty-four. Two members of my group were at school at that time. So the point of the matter I make is that we are in the financial position that we're in, but we are not suggesting tonight spending a single penny. We are simply suggesting a positive way forward in terms of trying to get some cross-party cooperation in a meaningful manner. And also, we are not in any way suggesting micromanagement. We are talking about trying to get a way forward in terms of looking to the longer term within the financial envelope, to use a phrase that councillor Alexander uses all too often. And the other point I would make is, we've not suggested this for any single other action. So suggest that we suggest it for every particular topic is just quite plain wrong. Can I lastly finish off by saying that councillor Keenan made, Bailey Keenan, sorry, made a very good point regarding the state of the bus shelters. I think his group and certainly our group opposed the cutting of the cleaning of bus shelters. It was halved by the administration two years ago, and that shows. And therefore, I think this is, we try to present this in a positive manner. All we're asking for is some meaningful discussion. It is a pity, a real pity, that the administration isn't prepared to undertake such meaningful discussion. Thank you, convener.
Thank you, Billy McPherson. I think you've made your points clearly. And I am going to move that we basically accept the note of how this expenditure is being spent and not accept the motion to set up a working group. I think the officers are very clear about the task ahead of them and the work they have to do. I'm sure they're also very responsive to every single email they get about these issues. So I think we go to the vote now.
Thank you. The convener seconded by Bailey Dawson has moved that the agenda note be agreed as submitted. As an amendment, Billy McPherson, seconded by councillor Duncan, has moved as circulated. Convener.
Motion.
Councillor Alexander.
Motion.
Lord Provost.
Motion.
Bailey Dawson.
The motion.
Councillor Ernlaclaw.
Motion.
Councillor Flynn.
Motion.
Councillor Hunter.
Motion.
Councillor Lynn.
Motion.
Bailey Roberts.
Motion.
Councillor Rome.
Motion.
Bailey Sowers.
Motion.
Councillor Short.
Motion.
Councillor Smith.
Motion.
Councillor Tolland.
Motion.
Bailey Keenan.
Amendment.
Councillor Crouchshank.
Amendment.
Councillor Finnegan.
Amendment.
Councillor McHugh.
Amendment.
Councillor McCarvin.
Amendment.
Councillor Malone.
The amendment.
Councillor Scullen.
Amendment.
Councillor Shears.
The amendment.
Bailey Wright.
Amendment.
Bailey McPherson.
The amendment.
Councillor Coleman.
The amendment.
Councillor Creighton.
Amendment.
Councillor Duncan.
Amendment.
Bailey Scott.
Amendment.
So it's fourteen for the motion and fourteen for the amendment, so the convener has the casting vote.
I'll be supporting the motion, thank you.
Thank you. So the motion is carried.
Veronica, can we move to the next item?
Thank you, convener. Item three, compost certification twenty twenty-four twenty-five, this report is for noting.
This is a brief note, it's good news, it is pointing out that we have passed one hundred certification for our compost. We've retained that position. I think we are now producing about three thousand five hundred tonnes of compost per year. And in terms of sales of that compost, it's about seventy-one thousand pounds, so a good earner for the council. And we also set aside about three hundred tonnes of compost for the community growing network. So this report is essentially for noting. I'm just wondering if anyone has any questions or comments. Nope, thank you.
Item four, Dundee biodiversity action plan, annual progress report.
So this is a very, very detailed report. You will recall that back in twenty twenty, the council produced a ten-year biodiversity plan, and we report on that plan annually. This is the fourth annual report. This is in addition to the biodiversity duties report, which we approved last November. In this report, we detail an extensive raft of work undertaken. I really want to thank Mr Boyle and Catherine Conroy and the team, especially Alison Anderson, Alison Abercrombie, for the phenomenal amount of work they do across the whole of the city and all the volunteers who helped make this possible. And the report basically highlights the key achievements from the last year, all the work undertaken in terms of tree planting, amphibian ladders, retaining green flags, It's Your Neighbourhood Awards, and dealing with ash dieback. But more importantly, the report also highlights the increasing importance of biodiversity in combating the climate and nature emergency. It's increasingly clear that we will only combat the climate emergency with assistance of nature. And we now have a huge raft of new regulations governing the work we do here through NPF four, through the Nature Network's work with Nature Scotland, and through the new, the draft biodiversity strategy from the Scottish government. So I'm going to, and this report is for noting, but I'm going to open up for questions. I believe councillor Coleman is the first comment.
Thank you, convener. I agree with you, this is an exceptional report, and I'm pleased to see the great work of the countryside rangers highlighted in this report. Since I was elected to the council a couple of years ago, I have been very impressed with the countryside rangers. The report highlights that they've engaged with seven hundred and fifteen children across fourteen schools in the last year and facilitated six hundred hours of volunteering. I'm sure we can all agree, that is fantastic. However, I would make the point that our group has repeatedly included additional country ranger post in our budget proposals year after year. So fourteen schools is really good, but with additional staffing, more could be achieved, and other schools, it could be included. And I do think that this should be a budget priority going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Coleman. I can see that Bailey Scott also has a question, if you'd like to come in at this point.
It's just a wee query, convener, under the section, the actions under woodland, and it's the one that deals with the control of grey squirrels. And the progress says that there was, control was carried out at nine locations with known grey squirrel populations present. And should the, should the control of grey squirrels not been carried out, whether or not known areas of red squirrel populations?
Ah, right. I will ask Mr Boyle to come in in response to that, in me bringing Alison Anderson. Mr Boyle.
Thanks, convener. Thanks, Bailey Scott. Yes, the whole idea is to control grey squirrels under territory, the indigenous territory of the red squirrel, so you're correct in saying that, Bailey Scott.
Also, that is just a typo, it should say red squirrel.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, and where grey squirrels are present, threatening red squirrels. And I am very happy to move that we note this report and remit the executive director to bring back the biodiversity action plan later in the year. One of the things that we have been working on are biodiversity reports for, on a ward-by-ward basis. So hopefully, later in the year, we'll be able to meet with ward councillors and go through the key highlights in your ward and the work that's been undertaken in each of the wards across Dundee. But that will come back with the update later in the year. Are people happy to note this report? Thank you. Veronica?
Thank you. Item five, air quality update.
Okay, and this is again a very dense and packed report. I'm very glad that Mr Sterling included a glossary at the back for the many, many acronyms in this report. And we basically got an appendix. Appendix one is the monitoring data for twenty twenty-three. Appendix two has the preliminary information on monitoring January to April this year that will be corrected. And appendix three has the highlights of the air quality action plan. And appendix four, page fifty-seven, details, all of the, the full details of the air quality action plan and the actions proposed. And I'm opening up for questions, so I think I'll bring in Bailey McPherson first.
Thanks, convener. With regard to the information on page twenty-nine, I note that, and I think we would all accept, over the last probably twenty years, but I think we've seen year-by-year improvements at many locations in terms of air quality, albeit we've had significant problems over the years. For example, in my own ward in Lochie Road, which regularly has appeared in the Friends of the Earth, I was waiting to say top ten. I think maybe bottom ten would maybe be more the appropriate way of putting it. Meadow Side, Seagate and Whitehall Street have also appeared over the years. We've seen improvements, some of it, I think, the pandemic had an impact. And although pandemics, you know, the pandemic was a great shock and caused, you know, a massive impact on the country, what it did also change was work patterns and car movements. And certainly, the decline of car movements in Lochie Road frankly has been a positive in relation to the overall quality of air. And I would like to, particularly in relation to Lochie Road, highlight in a very positive sense the work that explored unneeded in putting electric buses on the twenty-eight route. I think that was a very positive action. However, my question's really around car alterations to the road network. And I had long argued, and we're going back to the days of Mike Galloway as the Executive Director of City Development, that we should ban the right turns in and out of Clegg Horn Street. Now, that was as much for road safety reasons, because there were a number of accidents on the junction over the years, as well as air quality issues. But that has been done, and I think that's had a, albeit not massive, but nonetheless, has had an impact in relation to air quality with fewer vehicles backed up trying to turn right out of Clegg Horn Street, for example. However, my question's really around what else are we taking forward or are we not taking forward in relation to road layout in Lochie Road? And the part of Lochie Road we're talking about here is from the bottom of Tullideff Road down to Paul Park Road, which has traditionally had the significant air quality issue. Now, prior to the twenty twenty-two election, there was a briefing of elected members, and I can't remember if it was just us in the West End ward, or it was all elected members, I think it was all elected members, where the head of sustainable transport and roads went through a number of options in relation to road layout to further improve air quality long term. Some were quite dramatic and frankly, frankly, very expensive, some less so. But I suppose my question is, has anything happened with that? Because I think since then, there's been no further, I can't remember getting any further update on that. And I'm just really wondering if officers, and I think it's more city development than neighborhood services, if officers could perhaps give a little bit of an update as to whether they're taking that any further or not.
Thank you very much, Billy McPherson. I would assume there would be Mr McNauton who would come in on that point. Would that be correct? So this is about, yeah, adaptations to the road.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, convener. So we have recently been awarded funding through Sustrans to undertake further design work. This is the evolution of the design on a full route basis of the Lochie Road corridor to look at bus priority and active travel in conjunction. So again, there will be design work going on in the next twelve to eighteen months on that corridor. And one of the other corridors in the city as well, Arbuthnot Road, on a similar bait. And again, the work there will have a look at developing the junction programme in addition to other links as well for options, and that will involve consultation. When we have the conclusion of that design work, we will bring report back to committee to advise an update on the proposals, if any, going forward.
Billy McPherson, are you happy with that?
Happy with that, and obviously, Mr McNauton will undoubtedly keep us updated, so thank you.
Councillor Tolland?
Thank you. Yeah, just a kind of a quick comment, really, I mean, a really good report, and I think it's kind of helping us move forward. And I noted the report had mentioned public health, and I think that this is maybe an issue we need to kind of come back to again and again. The introduction of the LEZ roads, I've noticed is going to reduce kind of nitrogen oxide by seventy percent in the central area, and then a little bit, twenty percent in the Lochie Road area. by 70% in the central area and then a little bit 20% in the Lochie Road area as well. But this is a public health issue and it's maybe worth noting that at the meeting, this is a public health issue. These emissions that we have been having and the emissions that we're trying to reduce is literally to try and prevent respiratory diseases amongst everything else as well and also protect our children from those health, those emissions as well. So it's a great impact, I think, that we're doing, it's a great service that we're doing. So well done to the team and Tony Boyle, I'm seeing you nodding in agreement there because it is a health issue and it's maybe worthwhile kind of thinking about that continuously. I know there's been some criticism of the LEZ in the newspapers and so forth, but I do want to point out that this helps health, this helps children's health and it helps our respiratory health across the board as well. So it's a great piece of work and I think we're making massive, massive inroads.
Thank you very much for that, Councillor Tolland. And it's, you know, it's a very positive rapport and certainly one of the big contributors is the changes, the electrification of the bus fleet down Lochie Road has made a significant impact in reducing those emissions. Can I bring in councillor Rome?
Thank you, Covenor. We're all singing from the same hymn sheet here. I just wanted to build on comments largely covered by councillor Tolland and Bailey McPherson regarding the improvements that we've seen on Lochie Road and the health improvements. And indeed build on my earlier comments in public about the reduction in particulate matter, which is another cause of irritants and health complaints that comes from polluting vehicles. I just wanted to really emphasise the last bullet point on page 51, which says that the LEZ is likely to have led and continue to lead to improvements in emissions from diesel cars and LGVs by shifting towards a fleet of higher Euro class and therefore result in lower emissions and electric vehicles. And so I think we're all in agreement here and we were all back in that position, but I just wanted to highlight that, Covenor. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Rome. So the recommendations are that we remit the executive director of neighbourhood services to submit the 2024 air quality annual progress report as a statutally to do. That we also remit him to request a revocation of the one hour mean nitrogen dioxide monitoring. So that's good news because we had to do that because we were breaching the levels. Now, we have not breached the level sufficiently long enough to ask for a revocation. The fourth recommendation is to note the provisional air quality monitoring data for the early months of this year. And the fourth recommendation is that we remit to the executive director of neighbourhood services that he now progress with a statutory consultation in line with the requirements. Our people, I can see that Bailey Keenan would like to come in.
Just to make a quick comment, I mean, I have no doubt that the pollutants make a difference to people's health. And given now that we're starting to see these reduced, I'm wondering if we'll be able to gather data from the health board so as that that could be added to the report in the future and that we'll have got a clear measure of the difference that it's making to individuals' health, whether that's children or adults, you know, across the board. I think we've asked for it before, but we've never seen it come into council. But given that we're working in partnership with the health service, it'd be certainly good to have someone. And now that we're doing measures that are actively to target the emissions and in health issues, then it'd be good to see that as another measure of success.
Bailey Keenan, thanks for that suggestion. I don't know which officer I would ask about the possibility of gathering such data. Would it be you, Mr Boyle? Ah, Mr Sterling.
Thanks, Covenor. I'm sure that's something we could look at, but I'll hand over to Mr Sterling to comment.
Yeah, thanks, Covenor, thanks Bailey Keenan. Yeah, it's something that we can raise, we have links with the Health Protection Team, NHS T side, so we have regular meetings with them. So it's something I can add to the agenda and discuss how we could include that information, what data they may have available to support that when we, when we report again.
Okay, thank you. Bailey Keenan, you happy with that? Yeah. And I'd like to bring in councillor Lynne.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to what councillor Keenan said, quite right too, that we would hope to see a reduction in respiratory illnesses. That data, I'm absolutely certain exists because we'll have data on all sorts of medical conditions and I think that would be easy enough for us to retrieve and we should do. And we should look forward to seeing a reduction in respiratory diseases as a result of the measures that would be taken, not just in the city centre, but Scotland wide in terms of reducing emissions. So I look forward to seeing that coming to the commission, it shouldn't be too hard, let us say.
Thank you. So I'd just like to congratulate Mr Sterling and the team. You hit the targets. It's a very positive rapport. It's absolutely vital that we keep moving in this direction. And, you know, we've said that before, some people have said, oh, you've hit the target, so why bother? Well, if we don't keep up the pressure, we could go backwards. So it's a success story, so well done. I assume that everybody's happy with the recommendations. I can see no dissent. Thank you. Veronica, can we move to the last item, please?
Item number six, open space asset management plan. This report is for your approval.
Thank you very much. And again, this is a very detailed report. I loved the appendices, particularly the list of all the community growing spaces and all the, and the number of hedgerows we have and the fact that Dundee is one of the greenest cities because we've got 42%, 41% open space and 62% when we add in the gardens. So this, I think this is the first time we have produced a report of this type. We're being asked to note the report and approve the shape of the report. One of the things that I'll certainly be working with Mr Boyle on is making sure that we tie this work up with the work that the climate and sustainability team are doing on risk and vulnerability. Because not only do we have to manage all of these open spaces in Dundee, but we now have to make sure that those open spaces more proactively support us against flooding, drought. Whenever we plant a tree, we're not planting a tree for this climate, we're planting a tree that will withstand the increases in temperature, the increased wetter winters, the drier summers. So the whole role of this landscape in assisting us in adaptation is increasingly important. So having an overview of the whole scope of the job required has been very helpful, certainly for me. I'm just checking, I think I've got councillor Duncan first.
Yeah, thanks, Covenor. Just to draw attention to appendix two, page 100, there's an item there about historic features and unsurprisingly things like the Dawson Park Fountain, the Magdalen Green Bandstand are listed. But it struck me, because I was there just the other day, there's no mention of Reivers Park. There's quite ornate stone gates going in there and a fountain, obviously decommissioned by now, which was presented to the community in 1887 by James Guthrie Orker, quite a prominent figure in Doughty Ferry history. So I'm just wondering for comments, does anybody look after that? Is the council responsible for it? And I'm certainly hoping that there would be.
Mr Boyle?
Thanks, Covenor, and thanks councillor Duncan makes a very valid point. We have a number of assets and the short answer to the question is we do, in this regular assessment undertaking of all these structures. There's a wider piece of work that Mrs Conroy is leading on in terms of making sure we fully complete a full inventory of all assets, whether they're managed directly through neighbourhood services or not. And that is going to be the next phase of this management plan going forward. Thanks, Covenor.
Thanks, Mr Boyle. But just for quality, is that confirmation that the council does actually maintain the structures at the moment?
Mr Boyle?
Yeah, if we're talking about the Reivers Stone feature, for example, yeah, there's a regular assessment undertaken of that to ensure that it's safe and the structure's sound.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Bailey McPherson, I can see you have a question.
Yeah, my question's in relation to the information about risks to the open space asset at 14.3, where there's quite a comprehensive list of these. It's the very last one that I've got a question about because I'm not really sure what it's trying to tell me. And it talks about reduction in income derived from Dundee's open space asset. What would sort of be the areas where we have had a reduction or have we had a reduction in income from Dundee's open space asset? And what sort of areas are we talking about if there has been? And I'm a little bit confused by what we mean by the treatment, control of that, procedures in place to streamline customer journey. I'm not quite sure what that's actually trying to tell me. So perhaps officers could give me some information on that. Thank you.
Mr Boyle, I hope that you found that point, it's 14.3, the reduction in income from Dundee's open space asset, just clarifying exactly what we're talking about there.
Okay, thanks, Covenor, thanks Bailey McPherson. I'll ask Mrs Conroy to comment on that specific point, please.
Thanks, Covenor. If you could just leave that with me councillor, sorry Bailey McPherson, I'll just take that away and come back to you with an update by email if that's okay.
Yeah, definitely happy with that. Thank you.
Thanks for raising the comment. I think it's de-jargoning it really, so thank you. Councillor McHugh?
Thank you. A comment on item 16, which is the action plan. And the first two areas, key delivery areas, talk about parks and play opportunities. And I have asked officers to consider including the word inclusive in both of these. That would be inclusive design for parks and inclusive play opportunities. I'm thinking here of the recent press reports about some of the play park improvements and concerns that they weren't always, you know, accessible to all children. And I think the team have agreed that they would consider this.
Councillor McHugh, I'm very happy to support that. I hope the officers have got a note of the points where we have to change the wording. Yeah, I can see them nodding. And thank you for bringing that up. Councillor Short?
Thank you, Covenor. Again, mine's for action plan 16 and it's item seven, I believe. Provide further opportunities for pedestrianised areas, pocket parks and support empowered communities. You'll perhaps be familiar that I have a very empowered community down at the city centre in Harbour Community Council, who are very keen to work with the two high schools that we have in the ward, that's Dundee High School and Morgan, with a view to having a pop-up community garden, which will look at biodiversity and why it's important that our spaces around us don't have to be like bowling greens behind Fraser McPherson, but also they can be mini jungles. So just wanting to confirm that, it says very clearly in black and white that city development would be open to working with various people. But I just want to clarify that they will also do it on a very much pop-up basis. And I know there's areas of the city that are perhaps going to be developed in the future, but like the Tayview Gardens, which is HRA land, but has been a fantastic addition to the Merseyfield Ward. So we want to see that progressing, especially when communities are right behind it and pushing the envelope. I've said it, sorry.
Hey, thanks councillor Short. As you have directed that specifically to city development, I'm going to bring in Mr Presswood to answer. So this is the action plan on pop-up parks and working with city development.
Chad, I'm very happy to pick that up and discuss off-line with councillor Short. I have to say, members are well aware of the significant financial challenges that the council has and I think it would be inappropriate for me to make commitments at this level without having clear visibility at a ward by ward basis to understand what the request specifically is. So I think we're aware of the kind of issues that have been brought up by the community council and by councillor Short, but I think it would be better if I could have that discussion before making any commitment.
Thank you, Mr Presswood. So this is basically to note the scope of the management that we undertake and to approve the open space asset management plan. I'm going to put in my final comment about how this has to increasingly be a joint venture between neighbourhood services and the climate and sustainability team in the council because we not only have to manage and maintain all that land and all those facilities and assets, we have to help them work with us and to protect us from the increases in temperature that are on their way. So are people happy to accept these recommendations? Thank you. I think that is our business for this evening.
Thank you, Covenor. The next committee is the Fair Work Economic Growth and Infrastructure Committee.
Thank you for the introduction, Roger, and I'll not bother saying it again. Can I have the first item, please, Veronica?
Thank you. Item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
Yeah, I see one so far, councillor Shears.
Yeah, thanks. It's just on item two. And my employer is quite a big user of that scheme. So I note that it's only for noting and remitting a further report, so it's really just for transparency that I put my interest there.
Much appreciate councillor Shears. Just give a few seconds, but I don't see any others. And so move on to the next item, please.
Item number two, parking promotion. This agenda notice for your approval.
I've got councillor Lynne, can I just check firstly councillor Lynne, the comments for this item, is that correct?
Yes, that's right, Covenor, item two.
That's great. And I won't really say much more about this item, it largely does what it says on the tin. I think that there's been unanimous support for the LEZ throughout the chamber and as we just heard in the previous committee, there's already been great improvements in terms of air quality. However, I think everyone here is also cognisant about the potential negative impacts on the city centre business. And I think that this is a worthy aim in order to support that and then generating support in the long term for parking out with that central parking area. So I've got your comment first councillor Lynne.
Yeah, just related to what you said, I mean, I have to admit, I had some misgivings about the LEZ, not about the intention of it, which is to improve air quality. I was always in favour of the LEZ despite my misgivings, but what I was concerned about was the potential impact on the city centre. And indeed, there's been a lot of to and fro, particularly on social media, about how this is going to contribute further to the decline of the city centre, maybe not couched on social media, in exactly those terms, but contribute to the decline by limiting the number of people who are visiting the city centre. But I'm really pleased to see this parking promotion come for a limited time, because I think it highlights to the people who are saying, I won't be able to come to the city centre anymore because my vehicle is non-compliant, that yes, of course they can come to the city centre because the two car parks that are included in this promotion are a hop, skip and a jump from the city centre. And by doing it in this limited way throughout the month of July, that's going to drive home the point that nobody's excluded from the city centre, no matter how old their vehicle. And of course, within the inner core of the city centre, the air quality will be better. Let's not forget that Seagate was once one of the most polluted streets in the whole of Scotland, I think it was up there with the street in Glasgow. And, you know, the report in the previous committee showed that that's no longer the case. So, yeah, it's a win-win. Sweeter smell in city centre, lower emissions, better health, but no one actually excluded from the city centre like, 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 you know, some people claim. So thanks for that, Covenor.
Thank you very much for that contribution councillor Lynne, that's very helpful and very positive. And the next item I've got, sorry, the next question I've got is from councillor Duncan, please.
Yep, thanks, Covenor. Yeah, the LEZ, I think as previous speakers have said, we're all in favour of it and despite, you know, press reports, it's early days frankly, you know, what effect it might have on businesses or anything else for that matter. The main aim is actually to improve health quality, of course. But having said that, I'm actually very pleased to see that this measure to help, you know, promote and sustain city centre businesses in a limited fashion is before us. And given that, you know, I represent a ward with a sizeable district shopping centre, I'm just wondering if officers have any plans to do a limited measure of help for the businesses there? I'm thinking, for example, the one or two weeks run up to Christmas, for example. Currently in Doughty Ferry, there's free car parks there, you have to pay on a Saturday, Sundays are free, but maybe for the fortnight before Christmas, you know, we could be, we can do a measure such as this.
Thanks for your support of comments councillor Duncan. I'm unaware of measures at this time, but of course, we always look at measures to support city centre economy as much as we can. I'm sure that's something we could potentially look at in the future. And councillor Shears, sorry, you already covered that. So I've got Bailey Keenan, please.
It's really just to ask if there'll be any monitoring of the air quality in the area while we reduce the car parking fee. Given that it's really sending a message, bring your polluting vehicle into centre rather than using public transport. Given that it's really sending a message, bring your polluting vehicle into centre rather than using public transport. So, you know, will it be a case that we'll need to start thinking about extending the LEZ zones? You know, we're going to monitor the air quality and the effect that it'll have on this to see whether, you know, is a good option to subsidise the parking in that period of time. I mean, I've always thought that the Olympia car park's been a bit of a white elephant, given that any time you used to drive past it, it was quite empty. But, you know, it's a big shopping centre. There's a lot of people there on a regular basis. So I'm just wondering whether there's any intention of monitoring the air quality.
Thanks, Bailey Keenan. I'm a bit confused whether you want to support car parking there or not. But I'll ask Mr Sterling, if he's still on the call, if he's aware of any measures going to take place during this month trial. Mr Sterling? I don't see Mr Sterling there. I'm not personally aware of measuring it's going to take place during this very time of the trial, Bailey Keenan. But I believe there's fairly unanimous support for it. So I'll let me see if we can get that to you on that specific point, Bailey Keenan.
It's not my intention to divide on it, but it's really a question as to whether we're looking to monitor and find out if it's having an effect. We've already sat through one report and discussed at length, obviously, the improvements that it's potentially made to health. I'm no other keen on creating another area in the city that health deteriorates because of.
Thank you. Again, I'm confused as to whether you want the car parking there or not. But I'm sure Mr Sterling could pick that up and give us an update on whether there's going to be measuring there. Councillor Shears, I apologise for skipping past you and the confusion there. I'll come back to you now. Councillor Shears.
Yeah, thanks, convener, and sorry for the confusion. My question's relating to the £10,000 cost. And we've got a note that it's intended to grow long-term usage and the cost will be offset. If we don't see that increase in long-term usage, where are we filling that £10,000 from, or is it already built into the budget?
I'll bring in Mr McNamara on that item. Mr McNamara?
Yeah, thank you, convener. And thank you for the question, councillor Shears. It's going to be very difficult to monitor the impact of this offer. One, because it's only over a month period, and secondly, because there's a number of changes in travel behaviour and parking habits, as well as a result of both the LEZ and wider economic impacts, which are happening in the city centre at the moment. So we're not going to be able conclusively derive the impact from this offer. However, it's the aspiration of the offer that it will boost patronage of the uncompliant car market, which we know there is, into these car parks and hopefully benefit our market share of where this displaced parking may come to.
Thank you, Mr McNamara. So answer your question, councillor Shears?
Yeah, sort of. I just think in the future, if we have something like that on a report where we can't really quantify, it would maybe be better to have that in the report or note rather than put a figure on it that doesn't really relate to anything that we can measure.
Thanks, councillor Shears, for that. Councillor Flynn, please.
Yeah, thanks, convener. And I thank everybody supportive of this by the sounds of it. I just wanted to ask a question, convener, of the monitoring, but not the air quality monitoring, but more of the footfall and the parking monitoring. Mr, I may not have touched upon that. But is this going to be monitored both with the parking numbers and also are we going to find some way of monitoring the footfall within the city centre over this period?
Mr McNamara?
Yeah, thank you, convener. So we will be monitoring the parking numbers at the car parks again. As mentioned previously, it is difficult to compare like-for-like with either last year or going forward because of these wider overarching changes, which were seen to travel patterns and parking behaviour. So we'll not actually be able to determine the impact of that. In terms of footfall, we do have some measures through the public space CCTV cameras, which pick up on footfalls at key locations. And again, that's something that we will be continuously seeing to evaluate, which we do already. And that will give us an indication of travel behaviour and patterns. Of note, though, the majority of streets within the LEZ, before the LEZ came in, pedestrian traffic was higher than vehicle traffic on a like-for-like number basis. And again, public transport is still a higher method of journey into the city centre than private car use, anyway.
Thank you, Mr McNamara. Councillor, sorry, councillor, you want to come back?
Yeah, just to say thanks very much for that. And I think that's a point I would like to raise. I think we should be encouraging use of public transport as well as active travel as well. And I think it's just not just to focus on the cars here. I think important to note, it's all sustainable transport across the city. Thank you.
Absolutely. That's a brilliant point. And I think that's one that I'd be keen to emphasise that we, obviously since the launch of the Sustainable Transport Development Plan, are keen to see active travel increase. And we're doing all we can in order to boost that in the years to come. So thanks very much for emphasising that. Councillor Short, please.
I suppose I have to come in with my last half full, in that July is when Marks and Spencer's are going to be opening. And then in September, we're going to have House of Fraser at the other side. So hopefully, we'll be in a position that regionally, people will want to come. And it will be an invitation to come back into Dundee from a regional point of view and come to these new establishments, rather than just, obviously, we're a travel-to-work area. And it would be great if we could also be that travel-to-entertain area, travel-to-shop area. So hopefully, this kind of development will encourage those in Perth, Angus, Fife to come and see what we've got on offer as well and enjoy the splendors of Dundee.
Thanks for that, councillor Short. Yeah, I think it's very important that we don't have any unintended negative consequences of the LEZ. So I'm very happy to promote this as a temporary measure in order to boost awareness of the facilities we've got around the LEZ. I can't see any further comments. So with those comments noted, can that be agreed? Thank you. Next item, please, Veronica.
Item three, Discover Work Annual Update. This report is for no.
Oh, thank you. So this report provides the annual update on progress with the Discover Work Strategy and Action Plan. Provides an update on the continued sustained improvement and performance of the employability pathway, highlighting some of the activities that are supporting people from priority customer groups into positive destinations. And I suppose another way of saying that is it's working with those that are most in need of help, those that are long-term unemployed, for example, those that feel they don't have sufficient skills to find jobs in the modern job market. And I think they do an absolutely excellent job and have consistently championed the work that they do. And I think that everyone on this council has as well. Do you have any comments on this paper, this item? I'll just give it a second. No.
Councillor Flynn wants to speak.
Thank you, Mr Many. I think my laptop's running a bit slow. Councillor Crichton, please.
Thank you, convener. I would like to say credit where credit's due. This has clearly improved the performance of employability pathways, and my group certainly welcomes this. And the executive director has been very upfront in the past about the fact that the employability pathway in Dundee has performed poorer compared to the Scottish average. Are officers confident that by the time the employability pathway report comes next summer, that our performance will be in terms of across an average, as well as in Scotland, and to see this outcomes kind of gradually increase?
Mr Presswood?
Many thanks. We, I think as you've observed, there is a significant improvement to date. I think there will be further improvement in terms of the overall employability pace. You'll notice that we've now increased the numbers of customers supported over the past year to 840, of whom 75% or 620 did secure a positive outcome. I believe there is further potential for improvement. You'll note within the report, we have recently let the new challenge fund to the same third sector consortium all in Dundee, led by Enable. And they have very clearly been improving. And I think the fact that they're now able to expand in partnership with other third sector partners gives us confidence that there will be further improvement. I think the specific reference to the poor performance relates to youth participation. And I think that is one of the areas that we recognise that we are underperforming. And the separate youth participation rates report, which we brought back to committee earlier in the year, I think addresses, I think there's 30 measures in there that we are promoting. And that's probably what I feel most passionate about, because it is young people whose lives are effectively being failed by not securing a positive destination in that period of 16 to 19. I know that elected members have discussed this previously, and there is something of an unusual pattern in that higher-than-average numbers of young people get a positive destination when they leave school, but they simply don't sustain it to age 19. So apologies for the complexity of the answer, but yes, there is an improvement pattern here. But yes, we can continue to improve, because there are many, many things that we still need to do to keep improving our employability offer.
Thanks, Mr Presswood. Does that answer your full question, councillor Crichton?
Yeah, no, and thanks for the full answer, Mr Presswood. It's really good stuff. And obviously, it's great that we're wanting to do even more, especially for that kind of age bracket, that younger age bracket. So, no, just from our group, keep up the great work. And it's really impressive. So it's always good to get good stories, because I'm sick of hearing me bang on about bad stories. So always great, positive. So keep up the good work.
Thank you, councillor Crichton. Sure, I appreciate those comments, as do I. Councillor Flynn, please.
Yeah, thanks, convener. I'll continue with the positivity from yourself and councillor Crichton. So I think this is a very, very good report. And I think we'll have to commend the officers involved in this. Because I think without their efforts and input into this, it wouldn't be as successful. And I think, Mr Presswood, I would like you to pass a thanks on from the committee for that, because I think it really is a success. And I'd like to go on to the sector-based work academy. I'll just touch upon them for that, convener. Because I think, as you know, I'm really keen on these. I think they're actually quite a very positive way of working with long-term unemployed. And I think it's also good to work with the businesses in the city as well, including ourselves, of course, as an employer. And I think that the success of them and the longevity of keeping people in a positive destination is really important. The fact that after six months, we still see 71% is an incredible number. But it just goes to show the work that's involved, not building up to these academies, but what happens after the academy is where the team continues to work with the individuals themselves and support them where they can. So I think it's a great report. Glad to see it. And I hope it continues to be a positive direction, as we're seeing here over the coming months and years. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, councillor Flynn. I literally couldn't agree with you more on that. And I think it's absolutely vital, the work that they do, not just in building people up for employment to that interview stage, but in sustaining them in employment and getting them into employment, indeed that they can be sustained in. So absolutely excellent work. And thanks again for your comments. I don't see anyone else waiting to come in. So, that being said, can that report be agreed? Thank you. Next item, please, Veronica.
Thank you, convener. Item four, Development Plan Scheme 2024 and Master Plan Consent Area Schemes. This report is for your approval.
So this is item six, approval of the annual development plan scheme. A report sets out the timing of key stages leading to the preparation of the council's new local development plan. Its work is now well underway, with the team currently involved in the important evidence gathering stage. So it's a very technical report. Does anyone have any questions on this one? I'll just give it a second. Councillor Coleman, please.
Thank you, Mr convener. On page 24, the report highlights a suggestion that consultation events should take place in venues throughout the city. There's drop-ins and events in a range of places at various different times. The reply from officers has been nebulous, talking about tailored to each individual consultation, whereas it is expected to take place. Can I have a direct assurance, please, that there is a commitment to hold local consultations, drop-in events, libraries and community centres across Dundee?
Thank you, councillor Coleman. I'd lost you there just at the start, but I think I got the gist of it. I'll bring in Mr Hamilton to answer that. I think it will vary consultation consultation, but Mr Hamilton?
Thank you, convener. I think as we state later on in the report itself, there are a number of stages in the preparation of the local development plan. And as we note in the report, the consultation arrangements for those different stages might vary. But there will certainly be key stages. We will want to engage with local community planning partnerships and other groups. There will be direct opportunities for face-to-face engagement, but it will be depending on the particular stage. But we recognise that there's not a one-size-fits-all approach, and we want to try and vary methods to ensure the widest possible participation.
Thank you, Mr Hamilton. Does that answer your question, councillor Coleman?
Yeah, so I'm quite keen to hear that we will be having our pop-up facilities, libraries and community centres as well. I mean, I appreciate the SPPs as a good way to do it, but for people to actually drop in, that is, I think, a key solution to this as well. But thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Anderson, please. You've got a comment.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. It's just on page 34. Mr Hamilton, you referred to the evidence gathering, and I just wanted to congratulate the team on the paper they produced on biodiversity in natural places, trees and soils. You often feel that we're under a hailstorm of legislative frameworks, but this consultation and evidence gathering document did a brilliant job at bringing together the massive range of legislative requirements that we're now having to comply with. So it was just to pass that on to the team, and I hope that you received some good responses.
Thank you, Councillor Anderson. I'm sure that will be appreciated by the team. What is, dare I say, it may be a thankless task sometimes going to that level of work in technical detail. I can see Mr Hamilton smiling, so hopefully I'm maybe on the right track. But I'm sure your comments are appreciated. Thank you. Do you have anyone else looking to come in on this item? No. In that case, can this be agreed? Thank you. I'll take that as agreement. Next item, please, Veronica.
Thank you. Item five, sourcing strategies by the head of design and property.
So this item seeks approval of 11 sourcing strategies to commence with the procurement exercise for each work stream. Strategies contained in the report comprise inspection, testing and services contracts, development of frameworks for data cable and passenger lifts, refurbishment and alterations to existing properties, good lifts replacement at the central library, and replacement of gallery writing and power blinds at the DCA. Have any questions or comments on this item? Bill McPherson, I can see you've got an amendment and a second there. Do you have any other comments on this? Just give it a second. No. Okay, I'll go to yourself. Bill McPherson?
Thanks, convener. Very simple thing. Perhaps the officers could be so kind as to circulate the amendment. It's very straightforward. As the use of procurement frameworks has become an increasing feature, seems to be the only game in town with regard to contract award these days. I have raised, as I think all members of committee know, my concerns about the need to ensure at all times public transparency throughout the process. In the case of these particular, we have no particular problem with the recommendations other than the fact that we feel that those that are brought back for consideration by members as opposed to simply being delegated away to officers, the figure in these is all £500,000. We feel that's overly high. And we feel that any contract awards made from this framework, which are greater in value than £200,000, would be a more transparent way of dealing with this. We fully accept that the very minor awards will only be reported back to committee. But we feel quite strongly that we need to be as publicly transparent as possible. I would make the point that we're only suggesting this in relation to tonight's items in item five. There's a wider issue about what appears in standing orders in the scheme of administration. Mr Many tells me that that's currently being reviewed and will be reported back to City Governance Committee after the summer recess. Obviously, we may want to look at that in relation to the figure for delegation in the future. That's not for tonight. All we're suggesting tonight is that any awards made in relation to these sourcing strategies before us tonight, that we bring back for members to make the final decision, any that are in relation. Any that are in relation uh that are in uh greater in value than two hundred thousand pounds. Uh thank you, convener.
Thank you, Bailey McPherson. Uh bring in councillor Crichton to second you. Councillor Crichton?
Thank you, convener. Um and yeah, more than happy to second uh Bailey McPherson. Um the council has to be transparent at all times and reducing the level uh which decisions are made away from the public domain can only be a good thing. And transparency is key and I just agree with everything uh Bailey McPherson says and I don't think this is too controversial. So more than happy to second.
Thank you, councillor Crichton. Um just before I move forward, I I wonder if I could maybe just uh bring in Mr. Presswood just to speak about um the reason, or maybe it would be more appropriate to bring in Mr. Martin to speak about the reason why this is uh currently going to the sourcing strategies. Mr. Martin?
Chair, I'm happy to come in on that point and then perhaps Mr. Martin then comes in afterwards. I think the first thing to emphasise is that um the the council has a very experienced team of senior officers in in design and property, uh in sustainable transportation and roads, and of course in democratic and legal services, uh as well as colleagues in finance. Now, one of the reasons that officers are bringing the broad principle of these procurement exercises to committee um and delegate and proposing delegation uh at the limit um identified in the report is the need to ensure that these projects are brought forward timiously. Uh and in some cases, that's for operational reasons. For example, any works that are being carried out within schools required to be carried out during um the school holiday period. And clearly there is um a a significant time constraint there. But the second thing is the effective management of the council's capital programme. And I'm very conscious that previously officers has been criticised for the extent of slippage within the capital programme. And I think the um the 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 proposal set out here um reflect the right balance between delegation pace uh and effective management of the capital programme alongside democratic scrutiny because members are being um asked to approve the sourcing strategy and then delegating at an appropriate level, in my opinion, um to officers to move forward the procurement process at pace. Um so I hope that elected members are willing to support the uh the 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 current approach. Uh and and clearly any concerns which elected members have um can be fed back um to officers for further review at any point during the the implementation of the sourcing strategies. Hope that's helpful, Chair.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Presswood. It's very helpful. Uh councillor Alexander, I can see you've got a question.
Thanks, convener. Yeah, um there is merit in what's being proposed, but I suppose it's just about, for want of a better description, unforeseen consequences. So uh I'm minded uh to reference specifically, for example, uh the DCA improvements, galleries one and two, powered blinds and light and replacement. Now, that is uh anticipated to cost in the region of four hundred and fifty thousand pounds, inclusive of non-contract allowances and fees. I'm just a little bit concerned that um we may well delay progress on that. So, you know, I can't, I'm not a board member of DCA. I do have regular dialogue with them. I know they're very keen uh to progress with the improvements that were planned for the DCA more generally. So I would just be slightly concerned that uh in then having to wait for a formal approval process through a committee, uh we might well actually delay progress in terms of the anticipated investment in some of those ventures. So I suppose it's a point of clar- clarification for from officers around uh whether or not there is any anticipated delay that that might happen. And I suppose the other point is um just being mindful of process. Suppose I wouldn't prevent, although I would hope that if there was an issue, elected members generally would be quite supportive of an approach where it might well be convener's approval or or spokesperson's approval if there was any anticipated, uh as I say, unforeseen consequences. I just wouldn't want to agree to something that might end up causing problems for some of the key partners in the city who are delivering important functions and the delivery of some of those improvements. So if I can perhaps just put that to um uh Mr. Presswood. Thank you.
Chair, I think that's a very important um point and and the the DCA example, I think, is is an important one because clearly work such as this required to be done between shows. And I'm not sure of of the specific details around that, but I think it would be a concern um if work so um because we we're required to bring it back to elected members had to um be delayed uh or indeed impacted on the opening date for the the next show. I think members um will be aware of the provision that in the event um that contracts exceed the thresholds identified within the reports, um officers are admitted um in in the event that they're ten percent or 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 greater. Uh officers are admitted to bring back a report to the next committee. Um so I hope that that gets the right balance between democratic scrutiny and effective financial control.
Thank you, Mr. Presswood. Um uh I can see you'd like to come back in, Bailey McPherson, with a comment, please.
Just very briefly, and and in fact councillor Alexander covered it, there is no potential for delay here whatsoever. Because although all all we are seeking to ensure that there is uh uh um elected member input into contracts above two hundred thousand arising out of this, these sourcing strategies. We have, and councillor Alexander commented on it, we have a convener approval process for fast turnaround. So there is no delay, no potential for delay. And I have to say, to be to the credit, because we see them all at committee, because they're reported back afterwards, spokespeople turn these around extremely fast, often within twenty-four hours. So the argu- it's a non-argument that Mr. Presswood's using there, because we can use in any urgent case the DCA or any other such urgent one, we can use the convener approval uh uh method. The fundamental point is, though, the final decision is being made by those elected uh as opposed to those who are not elected. And that is our simple point, convener. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Bailey McPherson. Uh councillor uh Tolland, do you have a question, please?
Yeah, Tolland, but thank you. Um so I'm just, if we were to if we were to lower that that number two, two hundred thousand, as Bailey McPherson had suggested, how many more of these cases would need to be discussed within a given year? Um Robin, would you know that?
Um, I think I would be guessing, but certainly it would be um i- if you look at the number of um capital projects on the the um the agenda tonight, I suspect it would certainly be into the sort twenty-plus uh number. And I think uh whilst accepting the point that Bailey McPherson has made uh about elected member scrutiny and and the turnaround for convener's approval, which I do agree on occasion um can be uh very, very rapid, but it can also be delayed. And I think if if there was a significant volume of these, then I think it might be a difficult process um to manage. And there is the risk uh of delay. Um so certainly from my point of view, um officers, I believe, um can handle this effectively uh within the parameters which members are being asked to agree um tonight. I'm not sure whether Mr. Many would like to come in, because obviously this is his uh bailiwick necessarily, rather than uh that the individual officers who are managing the capital progress, the capital process.
I can express that it's very helpful. Uh Mr. Many?
Thank you, convener. I have no comment to make.
Okay, thanks very much. Um I am quite sympathetic to the the amendments read by Bailey McPherson. Uh I suppose my other con- concerns were about the timmy's nature of things uh and the potential problems that's holding that up. Um I'm actually minded to agree with amendment, presuming that if you can include the wording on this occasion, that it would go to convener's approval uh as as well as members. And obviously, this is something we'll come back to when we look at in terms of standing orders. So Bailey McPherson's amenable to that and it doesn't cause any time delays, then I'm amenable to the amendment.
I'm more than happy to add in after uh be brought back to members for consideration, something along the lines of and in urgent cases, the convener uh the convener approval route is used, just exactly as you say, convener. So I'm more than happy with that and 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 that gives us a a very good compromise. Thank you.
Yeah, I I think the nature, as you say, of this one-off occasion and the fact we're being reviewing standing orders after the summer, I'm I'm happy to accept it on this occasion. So I'm glad we can agree on that. Uh can I have the next item, please, Veronica?
Item number six, tenders received by the head of design and property. This report is for your approval.
So there's a seeking approval to accept a total of six tenders with the committee's venture in the region of one point four million for construction and infrastructure work across the city. Have any questions on this item? Just give it a second. I don't see any questions. Can this tender report be agreed then? Thank you. I'll take that as agreement. Next item, please, Veronica.
Thank you. The following item is confidential. Do you wish to deal with it in the usual way?
Members happy to do it in a manner. I'll take that as agreement. Thank you very much. That's the end of the Fair Work and Economic Growth and Infrastructure Committee.
Thank you, convener. The final committee this evening is the City Governance Committee.
Good evening, folks. We'll just crack on with the agenda.
Yeah, thanks very much, convener. Firstly, are there any declarations of interest?
Any declarations? Nope. Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on.
That then takes you onto item two, Local Government Benchmarking Framework Performance Indicators. You're asking proposals.
Yeah, thank you very much, really. I don't intend to go through this in any great detail. Obviously, the contents are fairly self-explanatory, uh quite a comprehensive range of stats and figures and analysis uh contained within that. And obviously, it comes from a variety of different sources uh over the course of the year and uh again covers all of the different aspects of services that we deliver. I think it's really worth just pointing to table five point two, which provides that kind of high-level overview of the indicators in relation to each of the council's five strategic priorities. And that shows that forty-nine percent of the indicators met the benchmark of above the family group average compared to uh fifty-three percent last year, but it's really important to reflect on the contents of this report and of course, the the context in which we're operating to show that there is uh real improvement being made across a a series of areas. And where it isn't being made at the the pace that we all want to see, then clearly that's uh where the identified improvements come forward. Uh and that's where uh we are asked to focus on in terms of the approach that we take going forward. So uh I don't think there was any questions. I think it was straight to Bailey McPherson uh for an amendment, but I'll just check before I move to that if there are any questions on the report. Nope. Bailey McPherson, over to you.
Uh thanks, convener. And um I I agree that it's actually, it's a very well-written report. There's an awful lot of detail in it and 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 good areas of um positive improvement. It is, however, with regard to the information on page um six, says he's trying to find the page, that we have this uh a- amendment, which I hope in a consensual manner we can actually all agree to. Um basically, um if and I'm very grateful to Mr. Wardle for um circulating that. We we note that in relation to um the child poverty and inequality statistics on page six, uh only four are listed as being on target and nine are deemed areas for improvement. Now, I I I start with the caveat, this isn't a criticism in any way. And we're very conscious of the fact that uh some of these indicators are not solely within the council's control. For example, percentage of people living in poverty. Uh and obviously, um um i- issues like that require partnership working with with others of our um partners and not s- solely within the the uh control of Dundee City Council. However, I think in all reasonableness, um where um you have four listed on target, nine as areas for improvement, it would be really helpful, we feel, if that uh we ask the council leadership team, um rather than what it says in uh recommendation two one C as it stands, what we're saying is that we remit the council leadership team to review the selected areas for improvement. But we add that we would ask them to prepare a supplementary report covering each um area for improvement, uh every action within that area of improvement category with detailed actions that are being taken for all nine indicators. The supplementary report in due course come before the scrutiny committee when this report is considered for um uh uh consideration by that committee. Well, we we particularly um are 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 conscious of, for example, child poverty, twenty-seventh in Scotland, down two. Um crisis grants, which is, I presume, wholly within uh the remit of Dundee City Council, twenty-fifth in Scotland, uh down two. So as I say, we're not being in any way critical. We realise the challenges facing officers and indeed our partners in successfully delivering this. But we feel that it would be helpful if the council leadership team prepared a supplementary report on the areas that are required for improvement, so that can be discussed um uh further at the scrutiny committee, which at the end of the day is the purpose of that committee. So I hope that that could be agreed, um convener. Thank you.
Thanks very much, uh Bailey McPherson. I'll go to uh councillor Coleman next. Who's going to second the thing?
Thank you, Mr. Convener. Um in the interest of brevity, I formally second Bailey McPherson.
Thank you very much for that brevity. No, that's uh that's appreciated. And I think um again, the thrust of what you've said, Bailey McPherson, don't disagree with in the slightest. I suppose I'm just, again, trying to think of practical realities. I'm really conscious that the there is, as you rightly mentioned, there's a range of different partners that involve. So I'm, for example, very thoughtful about the fact that on Thursday evening, I will be chairing our fairness leadership panel, who uh generally speaking does things like reviewing the Child Action and Poverty Plan that comes through the committee process. So I think we've got quite a wealth of detail and action plans. We've got a very specific action plan on on child poverty and poverty generally in terms of the mitigations and uh the actions that we've developed as a city to take forward. And obviously, we've empowered through Dundee Partnership and the Fairness Leadership Panel, of which both the administration and our opposition are represented, the ability to kind of drill into these and also take forward a a series of actions on the back of that. So I I suppose what I'm trying not to do is reinvent the wheel. And I wonder um if if there's a different, perhaps, position of that. But I'm just going to check in because it might be helpful. I'm very conscious that there are officers who are uh more adept and more involved in the the gathering together of such uh reports and and stats and information. So can I bring in um the head of the Chief Executive Service, Andrea, in the first instance? Then it's just to ask her in terms of the the range of information that's currently available and the nature of that second part of the request. Thanks, Andrea.
Thank you and thank you, Bailey McPherson, um for um the amendment. And what I would say is that probably over the last couple of months, there's been quite a lot of detailed reports come forward about um kind of individual areas as part of this. So we have had the youth participation report and that links into the positive destinations. So it's drilled down quite a lot of detail. Um and children and families have brought forward the achievement for um curriculum for excellence earlier this year. So there's kind of more sort of really detailed reports that have come forward for quite a number of areas just in the last couple of months. So possibly a lot of it would just be us kind of extracting some of that information um and putting it maybe in a slightly different format um for further discussion. We will also have the council plan report due to come to committee. And again, that will go into a bit more detail. And as you mentioned, the fairness and child poverty plan, which has um a lot of detail um on that particular area and in particular, a lot of partnership work as well that will be noted there. So there might be a lot of the questions um covered in that that might um maybe give Bailey McPherson a bit more comfort about some of the actions that are actually going to be going on and and further fast-tracked.
Thanks, Andrea. That's really helpful. And I suppose it's just trying not to uh duplicate or reinvent the wheel. Um so Fraser, on that basis, I mean, again, I'm I'm not, uh you know, I'm not looking to divide on this. I'm just looking not to recreate an action plan that exists in one shape or form. So perhaps if we can uh, you know, delegate to officers to look at the key issues within that uh with a view to bringing back uh, you know, uh the the summary report that brings that all together because very conscious that it exists, but it might not be in the format that you're suggesting at this point in time. Does that make sense, Fraser? It might not.
I'm not sure it particularly does. I think what I'm asking for is something that's fairly straightforward, which is we go through each of the nine areas for improvement and give a brief summary of the actions that are being taken to tackle it. Now, I don't deny for a minute the information will be out there, but the fundamental point is about getting it crisp in relation to this report, which will have to come before the scrutiny committee. Now, if you devote down the amendment tonight, I'll just ask the questions. So officers, expect what I'm going to do. I'll just go through them one after the other and we'll have the conversation. It would be far better, I feel, that given that we've got nine areas for improvement um that we have a very brief, and I'm looking for bullet points, I'm not looking for a thirty-page report, I'm not looking to take away officers' time from the very valuable work that they are um doing. So it's something fairly straightforward that goes through in a bullet-pointed format the key issues that are being uh made to the key issues that are being made, to, for example, cover the percentage of children living in poverty, which I mentioned earlier, but any each of the nine. I don't think that's an unreasonable thing to ask. If I was asking for, you know, a volume of three hundred pages, you'd be quite right to vote it down. But I'm simply saying that where we have a whole load of strategic priorities, and we have quite clearly, the majority of them are not on target. I think it's not unreasonable to ask that we have a bit of a summary on each of the ones that are not to give us the reassurance and give the scrutiny committee the opportunity to discuss and debate and to scrutinise, which is its job, these particular ones. So I think, given the reassurance I hope I've given you, that I'm only looking for some bullet points on the key issues on each, that I hope that that could be agreed to. Thank you, convener.
Thanks very much, Bailey McPherson. That was really helpful clarification. And at no point did I suggest I was going to vote it down. I was merely looking for, I think, clarity around what was being expected. So the fact that you're not expecting a three-hundred-page report on each aspect, I think is really helpful. As I say, it was more about not duplicating efforts that are already either moving forward or have already delivered some of those strategic documents that sets out the action plan that we've considered in recent months. So I think on the basis of what you've said there, I'm perfectly content that that summary, kind of bullet-pointed, abridged version, as you suggest, that just provides that clarity. I would also make the point that I don't think it's actually required for city governance to approve what scrutiny does or doesn't do. Actually, I think scrutiny probably have that power to ask those questions and ask for that information to come forward. But notwithstanding that point, I'll come to councillor McHugh. And then I think that will be the final contribution. Dorothy?
I don't know if I need to say this now. We appear to have almost reached agreement. I think what Bailey McPherson was suggesting here was some kind of an improvement plan, a summarised improvement plan. And I think that's a good idea, whether it goes to scrutiny or whether it comes to full council. I'm not bothered, but I had the same concerns when I looked. You know, nine of the thirteen were areas for improvement. And I would personally like to see some kind of an improvement plan put in place to tackle these specific areas where we have challenges.
Yeah, thanks, Dorothy. Again, I don't think I'm willing to divide on this anyway. But I think broadly speaking, we're all saying the same thing, which is we want to see improvements on all these issues. And that is the nature of previous reports that have come forward. I think one of the things I would just reflect on very briefly, and I'll indulge myself as convener, is the Audit Scotland Report, which referenced the fact that not only were we seeing improvement in the city, and we were very clear on that, and that leadership, in its broadest possible sense, including the partners that we operate with. It was recognition that we know many of those issues and we understand them in a meaningful way and that we are adapting our approach and bringing forward the actions, whether that be through the Fairness and Child Poverty Action Plan or a whole host of other kind of actions that have been developed. So I think we know what the issues are. This report bears some of that out. We also know that we need to make improvement and there are actions that have already been agreed through previous committee as well. So on that basis, I think we're all broadly in agreement. So I will bring that item to applause if nobody is otherwise minded. Okay, thank you very much. We will move on to the next item.
Yeah, thank you very much. Item three then is Risk Management Annual Report. You're asking your recommendations.
Again, annual report, just setting out the risk matrix, a number of key areas there, just looking at different service areas. And obviously, the range of challenges that we have to consider when we're taking forward the services and the budgets of Dundee City Council as well. So I'll not say any more than that, but I'll go straight to questions, comments. I think Bailey McPherson was the quickest in there. Kevin?
Bailey McPherson's team's using him to Kevin. Okay, the smart move, Fraser. Smart move, Fraser, to add. Really, the questions around the risk and the level of risk that we see. And we've had reports from officers, or we're all aware, that there's an equal pay claim in. And we've had reports from officers that that equal pay claim has sort of made its way through various stages of tribunal. And it really questions whether we should have a risk in there because we have sort of got some awareness that there is that level of risk to council. I suppose we don't have the awareness of the level of money that perhaps needs to settle that claim or the size of, the trade unions obviously suggest it's considerable. So I'm wondering why there isn't that additional risk put in now that we're starting to monitor the potential for that to have an effect on budgets or otherwise of council workforce, whether it's industrial action as these things move towards some kind of settlement. So really, why have we not got a specific risk in against the pay claim, given that other councils, you know, are moving in that direction as well and have had claims to settle? So perhaps an officer could give a response.
Thanks very much for the question, Kevin. I will go to Mr Emma in the first instance. Robert?
Thank you, convener, and thank you, Betty Keenan. So I think it's important to remember the risk assessment, a good document we keep under regular review and reflects the current strategic risks in front of the council. And you'll be aware, it sets out the changes in those since you last looked at it. At this stage, we don't have a quantifiable risk, as Betty Keenan has just outlined, in terms of what the scale of any eligible claim might be. And until the such stage, we have that, we can't assess it in terms of where it would fit. I think it could be that depending on the terms or whether we consider any claim as valid, that that would fall under a financial risk. Or, as you've also alluded to, it could potentially affect a fall under a workforce risk. But at the moment, there isn't a quantifiable tangible risk that we can picture in there. As and when, or if and when perhaps might be better to say, such a thing did materialise, then we would include it in the strategic risk assessment. If it was of a nature that it might have a strategic impact on the strategic ability of the council to deliver its goals, convener. So we will be keeping that under review.
Thanks very much, Kevin.
Convener, you're obviously, I kind of differ from officers on that. I can understand why they're potentially saying it, but I differ from the point of view, a risk assessment lands at a level. If the risk assessment lands low at the moment, then we just accept there's not that much of a risk. If it becomes medium or it gets a bit higher, then we realise that we're in for a potential problem. I'm just surprised that there's not one there, knowing that we know there is a complaint, that there's, you know, action being taken against us.
Thanks, Kevin. Yeah, no, and it's a well-made point. And I think just making sure that we are monitoring that risk across the board is really important. And I think what the executive director says is it's kept under review. So that may well change at some point. And it's just understanding exactly the nature of that risk, when or if it might crystallise. But also, you know, how that's dealt with and the timescales involved. Because I know that, I think all elected members have received similar representations in that regard. And I think we're all probably very keen that we see things move on to a positive conclusion, whatever that may well look like, and understanding what that time scale is and how we deal with that. Again, it's something that I think we're all really live to as well. So thanks very much for the point, Kevin. And I know that the executive director will take that on board when we're looking at risk going forward as well. So thank you. Seen no other comments on this item. So can I take this item as agreed? Thank you very much. Move on to the next item, Willie.
Yeah, thanks. Item five, for use of regulation based ethical powers. You're asking your recommendations.
Again, this is the statutory requirement to report on the use of the regulation. So is there any questions in particular on this item? No? Okay, can I take that as agreed? Thank you very much. Willie? Oh, sorry. Willie, I'll come back. Although we have agreed the report now. Councillor Short had a question. I was too quick. So councillor Short?
Sorry, I was, my words weren't fast enough. It was just a very quick question. There's an area that talks about monshin for tobacco and I'm presuming the posh name for vapes. And there's only four. And I'm just wondering if we are live enough to the possibility of vapes being sold over the counter across the city because we do get quite a lot of people reporting it to us. It can't just be because I'm a city centre councillor, these shops are all across the board. So I'm just wondering, basically, are we making full use of the powers that we've got? Because the last thing we want to see is, you know, six-year-old, eight-year-old children with vapes running out of their mouths.
Yeah, no, it's a very good question. Lyn, thank you very much for asking it. I think there's always a fight balance, isn't there? Because I know that from an officer perspective, in terms of the use of these powers, generally speaking, you know, they're not the go-to, the first port of call. But I'll perhaps ask Mr Many first of all, and then perhaps Mr Sterling, if there's anything he wishes to add. Roger?
Thanks very much, convener. Given the nature of councillor Short's question, I think Mr Sterling would be in the best position to address it.
And not at all. Tom, over to you.
Yeah, thanks, convener. Yeah, this is an area that our trading standards team look at. And yeah, I think we have to have a case to be made to get the authorisations to do, you know, directed surveillance. However, it doesn't mean that we're not looking across the city and gathering information and checking and visiting premises, you know. Out with that directed surveillance, there has to be a good case to be made for that. But we do visit premises and raise the issues with them as well. So yeah, it's something that our trading standards team look at. And we have our dedicated officer to look at this aspect of tobacco control and vaping products.
Thanks very much. Thanks for the question, Lyn. Okay, well, we've agreed that one. So we'll move on to the item, Willie.
Okay, thank you very much. Item five, there's a word of ten different Scottish cities in our alliance. You're asking your proposals.
Yeah, I suppose I probably should have declared an interest. This is Chair of the Scottish Cities Alliance, shouldn't I? But certainly a non-financial interest, but clearly very straightforward in terms of what the report is asking for. Any questions or comments on this? Going to wait a little bit longer this time? No? Okay, can I take that as agreed then? Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next item.
You think you like them. Six then is the corporate procurement strategy. Again, you're asking your recommendations.
Again, obviously, this report relates to a number of other council reports and the council plan, and particularly community wealth building, as we've discussed numerous times through committee, and making sure that the strategy reflects both the national and the local policies and priorities, which have been outlined in all those various reports. The two key kind of goals of that are about increasing local spend in pursuit of community wealth building, as I've said, and also reducing carbon emissions from the supply chain and changing how the council buys things as well. So in that vein, very supportive of the approach that's been outlined within this report. Are there any questions or comments on its content? Councillor Anderson, Heather?
It was to ask a question around the community wealth building. I was just wondering if officers could clarify what specific steps they do to assist small Dundee companies getting on the list? You know, because they might need additional help. Big companies have got people who do this for a living and make sure that they're considered. But do we do anything specific to ensure that small Dundee companies are included?
It's a really good question, Heather. I know from previous interactions with the service that there are meet-the-buyer type events where actually Dundee City Council officers are in attendance to explain and support small and medium businesses in the city to get on some of those frameworks as well. But I'm stealing the thunder of officers, so I'm going to go to before I say any more. So Mr Thompson? Paul, I can't hear you, but I do see your lips moving. So either you're speaking very quietly or your audio isn't working. Can't hear a word. Well, Willie, you're trying to sort out your audio, perhaps try and bring in Robert just to offer a bit of an insight. If you can add anything. And if not, we'll perhaps come back after the meeting, Heather, with some more detail through email.
So thank you, convener. You answered it partly yourself. So the work we've done through meet-the-buyer type events and working directly with small businesses, I can circulate some more information about the practical things we've done after the meeting to members, but actually reaching out and trying to help people. Our objective is to make sure people can access opportunities to bid for work with the city council and there are any barriers to doing that.
Thanks, Robert. And I think it's also fair to say that, you know, I think we've all probably had the odd occasional contact from a business interested in the procurement process and different avenues in that sense as well. And I've always found that routing that through the corporate team has always been very well dealt with in terms of just providing that objective information and some guidance as to how things are done. Alan Bruff, you have just popped up on my screen and I'm reminded if you are okay to perhaps offer an insight. Sorry, I didn't realise you were on the call.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. And there's a few things that we can do because, I mean, for a small company in particular, tending for any public sector contract is never easy. And we do things where we have to meet the buyer events. We also walk contracts that are bigger so that, you know, small companies have a chance to take a part of it. But in terms of the process that they have to go through to actually, you know, be able to tender for a contract, we do use the supplier development programme. And we put the small suppliers in touch with the supplier development programme, who will independently help them increase their capabilities and their knowledge of how to put together a tender for a public sector contract.
Thanks very much, Alan. That's really appreciated. I've got another couple of questions. So I'll go to councillor Short.
Thank you, convener. This is basically Fair Work. And the Fair Work agenda was very much the campaign for the living wage. And as a local authority, we were very much part of that clog. But the public purse is wider than just the council. And I know that speaking to community groups, speaking to local business, they're trying to do their bit by keeping things local. And I just wondered what kind of engagement we've had from these really big anchor public agencies in the city like NHS T-Side, like the V and A, like the colleges, the universities, et cetera. Is, you know, we're walking the walk hopefully, but we want others to join us.
Ellen, that's a really important point. And I know that it has been raised in different forums. So it's been reflected as the board member on behalf of the council on the NHS T-Side board has been raised in those conversations, and particularly on a recent Development Day, actually, where that topic did come up in conversation. But beyond that, it's also been raised within the auspices of the Dundee Partnership, for example. So I'll perhaps go to the chief executive just to kind of give that overarching around that engagement. Because I know that he was the one that raised it during the Dundee Partnership, where we obviously have our university partners, our Chamber of Commerce and a whole host of others represented around the table. Greg?
Yeah, thanks, convener, and thanks councillor Short for the question. Just to give you that assurance that we are working with other anchor organisations in the city like NHS T-Side, the universities and the college to make sure that the public sector anchors are doing all they can to maximise community wealth building. We're actually also engaging with other national organisations that are perhaps involved in some of the supply chain, such as some of the health organisations. So please just to confirm that assurance that work continues to progress.
Thanks very much, Greg. Councillor Rome, Stephen?
Thanks, convener. Just a very brief comment, just to say how much I welcome this report and just to thank officers for all the efforts they put into this. I was at the meet-the-buyer event that was referenced back in February, and it was absolutely going like a fair. And I think that the feedback speaks for itself, as I think it was more than eighty-eight per cent of people said it would make them more likely to bid for public sector contracts. And I think the support given has been excellent. I think we're definitely going down the right path with this, and I'm sure that's been welcomed by all members. But just again, just a brief comment to thank officers for all the work they've done on this and hopefully will continue in this vein.
Thank you very much for those comments. Okay, I see no one else looking to come in on this item. So can I take this report as agreed, please? Thank you very much. Okay, Willie? We'll move on to the next item.
Yeah, thank you. Item seven is Public Access Code Diffusivity. You're asking your report.
Yeah, hopefully, again, this report is self-explanatory. I'm sure it'll be certainly welcomed by all elected members and comes after quite a comprehensive piece of work undertaken by officers. I want to thank officers for the range of activities, engagements, conversations and assessment, I suppose, that they've taken across the whole city. What was really clear is that there was a huge number of diffusiators across the city, but not all of those were actually included on the system, which is used as the public register for directing people who are in need or looking to use them for those that are in need. So it was really important in undertaking that, not just those that are in need. So it was really important that in undertaking that, not just about identifying gaps, but identifying where there were defibrillators that were not actually on the system so that people can be directed to them. So I think this has been a really welcome piece of work. Obviously, there's a recommendation in there to add to that in terms of the inclusion of one within the city centre. But this will be a very live piece of work. It's something that will have to be continuously ongoing. We'll have to review that and make sure that there is, as I say, that ongoing analysis to ensure that it is up to date and accurate in that sense as well. And there has been notably some investment and improvement in areas like the north east of the city, which was identified as one of those areas that had a number of gap sites, for want of a better description, in terms of not having any defibrillators. So again, for all those reasons, I'm sure we'll all broadly welcome this. I will go to councillor Duncan.
Thanks, Kavina. I would echo much of what you've just said there. Actually, I think all of us can agree, these defibs are potentially life saving. And coincidentally, just towards the end of last week, a resident actually got in touch with me to express concerns. I'm not going to go into detail, certainly not here, but one or two of these, the defibs in my ward, it turned out to be when users tried to phone up the emergency services, they were not actually registered, these units. And so I think that that underlines the importance of the council doing what it can to introduce the people who with good motives install these defibs, but to educate them, as it were, of the need to have them registered with the circuit network. And I've been in touch with officers whilst speaking today about that, including Mr. Emmett. And I think the feeling is that although it's absolutely not the council's responsibility, if we could facilitate as an organisation raising awareness around the around this issue with the people who with good intentions should be managing these these defibs, which very often they've raised the money for and they've installed. But they haven't always done it with council involvement. I'd be reasonably confident to say that where the council's been involved, the registration probably has been done. But we need to just be doing what we can to raise the awareness and maybe someone might press the lease with the details of what officers at the council to get in touch with, who could advise and explain about how to go about all of this.
Thank you very much, Greg. That's really appreciated. And again, echo certainly what you've said there. And I think there is that ongoing engagement and that mapping. And again, if we're taking that partnership approach, because it's absolutely key that we recognise that they are, you know, more involved in this than anyone else. And I also want to give a huge amount of credit, because I remember when this issue was really first raised with me in a in a formal sense as leader of the council. And many of you will know, certainly from the West End, Abby Lang, who was the head at Giral at Harris Academy, who'd contacted me and obviously led a significant campaign talking about cardiac arrest in young people after losing a friend at that school as well. And I think it's really important that people like that, again, important to recognise that our friend, Yusuf Abi Bakar, who lost his life, it's all of those things matter when we talk about these types of things. It's not merely just putting things on a database. It's actually genuinely an opportunity to save a life. I think in that vein, we should all recognise that this is an important step forward, not the end of a journey, but something that will hopefully stand many people in good stead for the longer term as well. Councillor Short.
Thank you very much, Kavina. On Friday night, three years later than the last one, we start the Euros. And I'm sure we all remember Christian Erickson, what happened to him in the Euros back in, it would have been twenty twenty, but it actually took place twenty one. And at that time, Jimmy Etchels, who had been at Drumgeith playing football, and he'd had a requirement for one of the defibrillators. And I'm just looking at the paper, a report of the time. And there's a very, very young looking councillor Alexander saying that he would get right behind this. And there's also the Joe Fitzpatrick MSP putting his thumbs up. And for some reason, I'm in a mask saying exactly the same thing. So it's very much been the political agenda for a long time on the back of what's happened. And I'd like to pay tribute to the fact that the officers, Susan Bruce in particular, has done an absolute sterling work, because we we looked at one point at the Maryfield Ward as being an abundance of jewels, because we have a number of them, but other parts of the city weren't the same. And it's not a finished job. Just next week, I'm going to meet one of the fatters down at City Quay and the people from the Unicorn to see about getting one here down at City Quay because of all the things that go on here. So as long as we're in a situation that we know where they are, and I know that there's been discussions about third sector organisations helping with the continued maintenance of them, because that's the important thing. But this is incredible that we've done this and also leading across Scotland with regards to this. So great news and well done. And thank you, everyone.
Thanks very much, Lyn. That's appreciated. Certainly agree with everything you said there. And I'll go to Bailey McPherson. Or should I call you Kevin now, since I've muddled everybody else up today?
Absolutely, Fred. The 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 point I would make, Kavina, is more of a question really. And it's really around, you 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 mentioned Harris Academy and the good work that Abby had done in the past and the tragedy that, you know, involved Yusuf quite a number of years ago. Now, it's actually arising out of an issue at Elliott Road playing fields that I mentioned this, but the issue is actually wider than one particular defibrillator, if I could actually put my teeth in at this particular point. At Elliott Road, the Harris FPs have raised the cost of providing a defibrillator. The issue is an electricity supply. Putting in electricity supply, if you like, from scratch will be prohibitively expensive at the playing fields. However, you could run the electricity from the nearest street light, which would be far more cost effective. And I have to say, I give credit to, and councillor Short mentioned, Susan Bruce, the Health and Safety Manager, also colleagues in children and family service, and indeed the head teacher at Harris Academy, who have all had a sort of hand in trying to move this one forward. And the street lighting partnership manager tells me that there is a problem in running, well, there's a major problem in running an electricity supply from a street street light, although it's technically possible. In terms of the council's contract with the electricity company, I don't know who it is, but I can guess, because street lights run on an unmetered supply contract, you can't run something that obviously is metered from it. Now, that appears to be the end of the line in that option. And it does appear to be quite unfortunate in terms of moving this defibrillator project forward at the Elliott Road playing fields. It strikes me that the electricity company will have corporate community duty responsibilities. And if it's the electricity company I'm thinking of, they have actually been extremely helpful in relation to an anti graffiti project elsewhere in my ward in the past. So I'm sure they do have corporate community duty responsibilities, and which I'm sure they take seriously. My question of officers is, is there a possibility of some engagement with our street lighting electricity supplier to see if there's a way around this by not breaching? Obviously, we have our responsibility to ensure that we stick to the terms of our electricity supply for street lighting. But would there be some merit in having some engagement with the electricity supplier to see that if a very limited number of defibrillators, I think we would all agree, the amount of electricity we're talking about is pretty minimal. And the number that we're talking about, which would be in this sort of instance, for example, at a playing field, is going to be very, very limited indeed. I'm wondering if we could perhaps have some engagement with our street lighting electricity supplier to see if some sort of compromise could be reached, which would be very helpful in this particular instance.
Thanks, Fraser. I think it's a really valid point. And I think exploring that conversation is really valuable. And as a slightly, kind of slight segue, but relevant to the point that you make, just thinking about assets that exist within a community. So I recently read, for example, and you'll get the tangential point in a moment, about BT utilising some of their infrastructure for the potential of electric vehicle charging. So again, it lends itself to looking at it through a slightly different lens that whilst there might be lampposts on every street, well, actually, there might also be BT boxes on some of those streets. So just thinking about how we best utilise some of that infrastructure for public good, I think is a really important point. Again, we'll be at the behest of those. But like you say, all these organisations have corporate policies which relate to social good and social gain. So hopefully, in that vein, we can certainly explore that as well. So perhaps that's something that I'll perhaps just go to the chief executive, but something that we can take off table and explore what that might look like. Obviously, the particular instance you're talking about may well be replicated in other areas. But Greg?
Yeah, thanks, Kavina, and thanks, Bailey McPherson. Happy to pick that up with relevant offers and make that particular ask for engagement. And then we'll update all committee members on any progress or update that comes from that discussion.
Most helpful, Greg. Thanks very much.
Okay, thanks very much for the question. I see no one else looking to come in. So can I take this report as agreed, please? Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next item. Willie?
Yeah, thank you. Item eight, then, Scottish Welfare Fund Low Covering Framework Extension. And you're asking your recommendations.
Okay, you can see the contents of the report in there, hopefully self explanatory to members. I see nobody rushing for the keyboard to ask a question. So can I take this item as agreed, please? Excellent. Thank you all very much. Move on again.
Okay, thank you. And finally, item nine, before these multifunctional devices contract transition, you're asking, asking the recommendations.
I can't say I'm a lover of the title of the report, but it does exactly what it says on the tin. Obviously, this is about a contract for those devices. So just seeking committee approval to agree the recommendations in section two. Any questions on this report? Nope. Can I take this as agreed? Thank you all very much. That is all the business. Have a fabulous week and we shall see you very soon. Take care.
Thank you. Goodnight.